Welcome to the September 23 Franklin Board of Education meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Gamble.
Present.
Mrs. Witkowski, here. Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I would like to do the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice as our own.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Witkowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Motion passes. Community comment period. Participants under this agenda item must limit their statement to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. Board may not discuss, comment, or question that does not relate to an agenda item. Would anyone like to comment? Please step forward and state your name and your address, please.
Howdy folks, I'm Steve Wamser, 7956 South Scepter Drive, Franklin. I've got three kids in the Franklin School District, one at each grades, so I think maybe I get nine minutes then. So I've been, I've, longtime Franklin resident. The reason that I'm here tonight, I've never come to one of these meetings. But I'm trying to, I appreciate that the kids are back in school this year. I think you guys made the right move with that compared to Old Creek canceling at the last second. My issue, my son was, we got an email today to pick him up immediately from school because he was in contact with someone who's, has COVID. He's got no symptoms. I have no idea what the story is, but apparently a bunch of kids got picked up. They can't go back to school for two weeks. It's kind of frustrating because I think the kids need to be in school. And, you know, I know half the people, it's a very polarizing topic, and half the people, you guys have a tough job because half the people want to do virtual, the other half want to have the kids in school. The nice thing is, the people that want to do virtual, you give them the option. So those people can stay home, right? But my issue is, so my son's going to be home for two weeks, you know? And when this whole thing started last year, we canceled school for the second half of last year, I know they're not getting the education that they need at home. Teachers did a good job, that's fine, but we started this whole mess to flatten the curve, to not overrun the hospitals. That's what everybody started this for. That never happened, we flattened the curve. Here we are six months later, and you're sending my son home from school for two weeks because he was on the, I have no idea who we talked to or whatever. They're all wearing masks anyway, so, you know, so it's just frustrating. You've got layers of leadership, on top of layers of leadership with Franklin Education, you've got the state, you've got Franklin, whatever, whatever Health Department, and they all have their own rules, and you've got these formulas to how kids are going to go home from school, or when they're going to cancel school. I want, I guess I'm here saying, we need strong leadership from all of you to keep these kids in school. My son is more likely to be injured, or hurt, or get into trouble at home alone for two weeks than he is in good supervision of the Franklin Public Schools. Those are the facts. I pulled up some stuff from COVID deaths by age group today, from the CDC website. Zero to 19 years old in Wisconsin of the 1259 deaths, 0%. So they're pretty safe at school. So I guess my point is, whatever you guys can do to keep these kids at school, I would send them back to school tomorrow. You know, I don't know why he's home for two weeks. I'm not going to get him tested because he doesn't have any symptoms. If you said, hey, you have to get him tested to send him back to school, then I would, but that's not an option now, he has to be home for two weeks. So I just think that's, that's what I think. So I don't know how many more minutes I have left, but I can keep going. I just don't know what the end game is, or what the plan is, if we're going to wear masks for the rest of our lives, if these kids need to see each other and communicate, they can't sit six feet away at lunch. I've got a seven-year-old. They need to communicate with other kids and see facial expressions and, kind of, there's no, like, end plan for this. I don't know what it is, and I don't know that you guys know what it is, but someone needs to be a leader here and say, we're going to continue to keep these kids at school. And it's kind of everybody in this room, so please do that, I guess, is my statement. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment? Would anyone else like to make a comment? Would anyone else like to make a comment? Hearing no more. The community comment session is closed. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Anyone, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Alexandrovich, and Sarah Second.
Second.
Ms. Witkowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six, school board announcements. Are there any announcements by board members? Okay, I do have one. On September 30th, there will be a special meeting of the Board of Education. Purpose of this meeting will be to conduct interviews for the vacant board seat. Item seven, school board.
How many candidates, Charlie? Four. Are we going to get their names prior to meeting and everything?
Yep. You'll be received their information on Friday.
Is there any way we can get it before Friday?
We'll send it to you tomorrow.
Oh, this Fri-, oh, this Friday.
Yes, this Friday.
Yep.
There's just a very brief biography that each of the candidates have submitted, but I'd be happy to send it out tomorrow if you'd like it.
Yeah, Friday would be fine.
It's fine. It's done, it's ready. Ms. Olshewski can get that out.
Yeah, it's done.
Yep. We'll send those to you.
Moving on to item seven, school board calendar. There'll be a regular board meeting on Wednesday, October 14th. Another regular school board meeting on Wednesday, October 28th. Item eight, district administration update.
Okay, just a few updates this evening. As you were aware, we had two cases of COVID today in the school district. We continue to follow all of our protocols to help to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Our school and district metrics are still looking very good, and those metrics will be provided every Friday to our staff and to our families. Tonight, you're going to have the opportunity to hear a report from our Athletics and Activities Director about what's been going on with our athletics and activities. We did begin to open up our events to fans, specifically to our parents only or family members. So we're very, we're limiting that to essentially four family members. We are not allowing, nor is the conference allowing, other fans from other communities to participate right now in our events. So if you'd like to discuss that further, we can do that during Mr. Hein's report. Dr. Reuter has recently spent a great deal of time conducting focus groups with all of our virtual teachers to gain information about what's going well, what are the glitches, what kind of support do they need? So he has a lot of data. He'll continue to do that every two weeks in October, and then once a month. He's also conducting a pulse survey at the beginning of each month with all the parents of our students who are learning virtually, again, to learn what's going well, what are the glitches, and how can we better support them. Ms. Ellie Housen is leading the work around our employee engagement, as she has for the last several years. There'll be a pulse survey going out next week, and then again in November, determining, again, how our employees feel about their engagement in working in Franklin Public Schools. We've begun our math testing this week in grades one through eight in math and reading. Dr. Cohen can correct me if I have anything inaccurate about that. And then grades nine through 10 will be participating in the ACT Aspire Math, reading English Language Arts, and Science. And then I'd just like to mention that I'll be conducting a virtual superintendent's coffee with our PTO and PTA presidents in early October, again, just to get feedback from our parents and families about our school year and about our district and things we can do to get better. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item nine, reports and presentations, other school board business. Ms. Larson?
This is Ms. Cody.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, seclusion and restraint report.
I jumped ahead, sorry about that.
Good evening. My report is not as joyful as Dr. Miller's, but in accordance with Wisconsin Act 125, addressing the use of seclusion and physical restraint in the public schools, we are required to submit an annual report, once a year, to the school board. So that is why we are here discussing this this evening, just to highlight a few things for the board. Included in the report, as a reminder, seclusion and/or physical restraint may be used only when a student's behavior presents a clear, present, and imminent risk to the physical safety of the student or others, and it is the least restrictive intervention feasible. There are a few things that we do that I listed in the report as well. We do review this data monthly, and we have members of the Student Services Department that really own that data and really take it very seriously and look for patterns and trends, and if there are needs for additional training or other supports for staff working with students, we act on that data. Some of the steps that we continue to take to be more proactive, to avoid seclusion and restraint, we continue to have our staff trained in nonviolent crisis intervention and prevention, safety. Hykologic is actually, she's our district trainer, and she's now considered a master trainer with the level of training that she's provided, and she continues to be updated on that regularly. This year, we did customize the sessions. More specifically, we have, we have one team, that's a response team at each school, which is a little bit different. In previous years, we have, may have several teams in one school working with, like, individual students, but just to, you know, address some of the safety concerns around COVID, we've just limited that to one team per school, and then they have some specific, like, care kits that they access if they would need to. And then we continue to address the universal social-emotional needs of students. And then we're also in year two of the Enhancing Social and Emotional Skills in Students with IEP's grant. So last year, we worked with teams in two schools, and now this year, we are expanding that to include more students and staff members. And, again, Hykologic is key in guiding those teams, but we work very closely with some of the state specialists in this area, and so we are expanding just in-house training opportunities, and, again, developing the skill set of teams so that, like, they'll work around a plan for one student, but then as a team, they should be able to take that process and transfer it to situations when they're planning for other students as well. So we're just upping our game in that area. And then the data, again, just continues to kind of ebb and flow based on the students who join us in our schools and what they present. So those are kind of the key highlights of the report. Any questions?
So we do have some high numbers in a couple of schools centered around a few students, it looks like. So based on what you said, your efforts there, we would expect that to get better, or are we?
That's the goal, yes.
Other than, it doesn't become the answer, restraint and seclusion doesn't become the answer you?
Yep, but we just, again, you know, that's the population that we would target, and working, again, some of its previous data, information that we know about students, and sometimes there are just new needs that present themselves. So the grant does specifically target students with more complex needs, so.
I have a question on the way the data is reported.
Sure.
Looking at Ben Franklin, it says 37 restraints, two students restrained, students with disabilities restrained, two. Does that mean four students were restrained, or does that just mean two?
It would be two.
Students, those two students happen to be students with disabilities?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Should we be alarmed with the numbers because there was three months less that the kids were in school, and the numbers are higher? I mean, it's only a couple of kids, but.
Yeah. It's really somewhat unpredictable, so that's a great question. Again, it just depends on some of the background, you know, that students come to us, and, but I can guarantee that there are teams that, on multiple levels, district-level support staff work alongside the cross-categorical teachers and the general ed. teachers, working with parents, just trying to find strategies that will work to avoid the situation, but I wish, I wish I had more of an answer in terms of a specific recipe, but, yeah. Every year, they seem to go up and down.
Hey, I have another question. Now, with 37 incidents and 47 incidents, with this limited number, I mean, this small number of students being involved, how is this taking the teacher away from instructing the other students in the class if they're having to spend so much time with these two students that are having issues?
So these students really are supported by a team, so it would be members of the child's IEP team, so the cross-categorical teacher, educational assistants who are trained.
That answers the question.
Yep. But they're all part of it. But they have a specific role as incidences occur, or in preventing the incidents, obviously.
And while you don't want high numbers of restraints, you do want children to be safe, including the child themselves, so it's all in that, in the interest of that child's safety and the safety of others, and it's, it's done within the letter of the law.
No, I'm sure we have to, and I'm not criticizing what's being done at all.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Cody. Item B, Athletics and Activities Report from Mr. Hein.
Think this is working? All right, excellent. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jordan Hein, I have the privilege of serving as the Director of Athletics and Activities here at Franklin Public Schools, and I'm looking forward to sharing some of the things that I'm very proud of over the last, last school year, and then up to date currently with our current school year. So as we're waiting for the, there we go, excellent. So just a brief recap and an introduction for those that are not aware, these are all of the high school athletic programs that we offer in their corresponding seasons. So we offer a very comprehensive athletics program. We offer every single WIAA-sponsored sport, as well as cheerleading, and dance, and lacrosse. So we're excited to see continued growth in those programs, continued engagement, and, as we'll touch on in a little bit, a lot of continued success. Within the activities and club side, we continue to offer a robust variety of opportunities for our students at Franklin High School, and we also offer several of these activities that are modified for the middle school as well, likewise for our athletics programs. Students that are involved in athletics and activities are oftentimes involved in more than one, which is excellent, and we see some tremendous data that shows that students that are involved in more than one athletic or activity offering while in high school outperform their peers in terms of GPA, attendance rates, their mindset about school, their overall quality of life, and also post-secondary success, which is all the more reason that I'm very proud to serve in this role, and I'm proud of the adults and the coaches and mentors that we have extending the classroom for our students.
Can we ask questions?
Absolutely, yeah, sure.
Can you go back a second?
Yeah.
I'm challenged when it comes to acronyms. What is ECO Club and FBLA?
So ECO Club is like an environmental, like.
Duh, ECO, eco.
Yep, ECO Club.
See, I thought you were always challenged.
FBLA is Future Business Leaders of America. NHS is National Honor Society.
That one I got.
Okay. Sage is Sexuality and Gender Equality. And then, I'm trying to think, if there's any others that are up there that, the Roar Store is our school store, Voices of FHS is a public speaking group where it's a lot like a TED Talk, where they'll prepare a seven to 10-minute presentation and give their own TED Talk on something that they're passionate about. Any other questions on activities, clubs? Great. So a little bit of a recap, it's been, I think I was scheduled in March or April to present, and then we had the school shut down. So a little bit of a recap from last school year, two dates up until the school shutdown. So we've had, we had a, we were on track for a very successful school year in terms of our athletics performances at the high school. So we were, we had, until the school shutdown, we had six conference championships, seven regional championships, and then we had four teams that qualified for state. We had one team state championship. Our girls, our dance program captured a state championship in the jazz division, and then Sarah Heinevetter, who is one of our teachers at the high school, was also named the State Coach of the Year, and she is the coach of our dance program. So up until the shutdown occurred, we were, we were having a tremendous year, and I think that energy has carried over despite being virtual for a bit. We were able to get started up in July again, and our kids are excited to raise the bar this year.
Just one comment.
Absolutely, yeah.
The slide was, is great if our six, but it'd be nice to know, like, which teams they were, or which.
Absolutely, yeah, I can, I can get you.
Because, you know, these are just numbers, but it'd be nice to know.
Yeah. And some of, there's, there, in your board report, there'll be some of the more specifics that I can, and I can share the remainder of that data. Another, something that I am very proud of from last year is that we were recognized as a WIAA Award of Excellence winner, once again. So we were first awarded this award in the 2016-2017 school year, and we won it again last year. And this award recognizes the overall program within the Athletics and Activities Department, recognizing achievements in sportsmanship, ethics, integrity, leadership, and character. And what's very exciting about that is, we are putting together a very high-performing program within our WIAA athletics, but I think the words and the traits that are listed below that, and the real reason for this award, are what we're most proud of, and that's that we're helping to shape and craft outstanding young adults that turn into outstanding citizens and leaders within our community and beyond. So something that we're very proud of across the program, and that'll be something that we're going to be chasing again this school year. And on the activity side, we had what I would consider some amazing events occur, and actually this, the photos here are from March 5th, so that, while that feels like it was years ago, this was our large, our last large gathering, I would say, at the high school. And it was a phenomenal community gathering to celebrate the FHS Multicultural Club Culture Fest, and so just a variety of pictures there. I know that many of the board members were able to attend, and it was a phenomenal example of our students coming together, utilizing teamwork that is involved with athletics and activities. We had an amazing adult mentor and advisor in Mrs. Gail DeClark, who helped orchestrate this, and bringing together just a wide variety of Franklin cultures and celebrating, and it was just an incredible event to be a part of. And, again, as I look back at this and see, you know, the gathering and the commons, we're looking forward to working our way to get back to the opportunity to continue doing this and bringing our community together physically, more so than virtually. Another outstanding achievement, our FHS forensics team placed fifth in Division One State, and this was actually a virtual forensics competition because our state tournament was postponed, and then they held it virtually in May. And so our students involved in FHS, or in forensics, prepared virtually, and they were able to compete virtually for judges, and ended up placing fifth, which is the highest finish in team history. And that's a photo of the forensics team up in the top corner, and they are coached by Catherine Hepworth, who's a teacher for us at the high school as well. And I touched on a little bit about the character traits and the things that were listed in the WIAA Award of Excellence, and the result that we see with our students being engaged in athletics and activities, the data that we see here on the screen is something that we are tremendously proud of from the last school year, and this is something that is ongoing. Cumulative as of quarter one of this year, our students that are involved in at least one athletic or activity offering at Franklin High School carry an average GPA of 3.5, and you can see at the bottom, the average GPA of a student that is not involved in an athletic or activity carries a GPA of 2.61. So our students that are tuned in and plugged in and surrounding themselves with positive peers, and the students that are being led by phenomenal adult mentors and coaches, we see this, kind of this upward spiral in their performance, and it's great to watch not only the performance that we see, you know, on the court, on the stage, but also the things that we're starting to see in the classroom and how we're continuing to climb with our average GPA as well. A little bit of participation data, this is also listed in your board report, but just for making sure that we cover this. So throughout the 2019 and 2020 school year, obviously, we were missing our spring season within this data, but if you look at the overall participation numbers in athletics and activities, they were definitely on the, on current trend. In fact, if I advance the next slide, so in the upper left, we'll see our total athletics participation over the last five years. And the key indicator that we can target, at least to look at data-wise from 2019 and 2020, since we didn't have a spring season with valid data, was the average number of participants per sport, and that's the trend line that we're going to continue to look to grow and get kids plugged into something that they are passionate about.
So this is not, it's not an unduplicated count though, it's just, kids can get counted more than once in each year?
Correct. So if an athlete or a student participates in three sports, they would be counted as three in our overall, in this, within this data here. And then on the bottom right will be our activities data, again, looking at missing a spring there, so there's a dip in the 2019-2020 school year. And this year, we'll be facing challenges, especially with clubs and activities, because they are generally larger, looking at how are we, you know, how we can adapt and run those virtually, and make sure that we're still providing that extension of the classroom for athletics activities in all of our clubs. Before I move on to discussing, kind of just giving a. Before I move on to discussing, kind of just giving a brief update on how we're handling the COVID-19 pandemic, any questions on data, anything I've shared to this point?
As far as activities, you say you're going to try to do those virtually. Why wouldn't we be doing in-person, like we are teaching in-person? I mean, why would they have to be virtual? I think it's important that we get back to, I mean, if people are wearing masks, there's no reason why they can't be in person.
So anything that is, that we can do so safely that with a, with a clear roster, much like a classroom. So if we have a clear roster, a clear seating chart, a smaller group, those are things that we can, we can design to run in-person after school. Anything that, when I think of something like our NHS meetings that have 300-some students, there's, we don't have a space within the school where we can appropriately distance. And at this time, as we continue to get the beginning of the school year started, we don't want to add another exposure to the school day in terms of, you know, if a student is, you know, we have four classes during the school day. Now, if they're participating in a large group meeting, that adds that fifth exposure, which then expands the number of, could potentially expand the number of students that would have to be quarantined. So as we continue to move forward and we continue to demonstrate that our practices and procedures are keeping kids in, you know, in school, keeping our doors open, absolutely, we'll continue to open up to more in-person, larger group gatherings as we're allowed to do so.
Yeah, Jordan, I have a question as well. Can I ask questions?
Feel free to, you can give me a call or shoot me an email. I'll definitely connect with you. So as we continue forward with our, how we are adapting and thriving through crisis here, we break us, we kind of break everything down into these three phases. We have game planning, which is all the things that are happening behind the scenes with weekly meetings. We finally settled down to weekly meetings over the course of July and looking at a lot of the practices and procedures that we're implementing with classrooms and things that we see day-to-day in our schools now are things that we initially piloted with small groups as we, as we got started with athletics returning in July. So it's, it's great to see, it's been great to work with the health department and our district leadership and our two district nurses, who have been phenomenal in believing in the value of students participating in athletics and activities and believing in the benefit of that and helping us design ways to keep it safe and to mitigate the risk of spreading disease. So a lot of that relates, you know, as we think through our weekly procedures, lots of meetings and planning and discussing rosters and making sure that we are operating using the latest and the best data available to us. Lots of planning ahead for our coaches and also implementing, you know, policies that will limit the exposure to our community as well, as Dr. Miller mentioned with our fan attendance policy. We, kind of relating to sport, we look at an offense and a defensive strategy. So we're playing offense against COVID-19 by conducting daily temp checks as students check in for their high-risk sport. And that would be football, volleyball, and boys soccer for the fall. And we do temp checks before practices, and then we also do health surveys for all students, all students involved in a sport right now. So their coach will check in with them to make sure that everything is 100%. And if not, then they, they don't participate that day. We do frequent cleaning of all shared equipment and surfaces. And then I think one of the biggest things that you might not see or might not think of initially because it's not as visible as someone cleaning a surface, but our students that are involved in athletics and activities right now, they are absolute champions for keeping our doors open and keeping our students and staff safe because they want to continue moving forward. And I think that's, having that, having that out there for them to earn and every day that we're in the building is another opportunity for us to demonstrate that what we're doing is working and that we are continuing to move forward in a safe and effective manner. I think that they become great leaders amongst their peers, and they're great advocates for demonstrating positive social behavior outside of school to make sure that we're, we're able to move forward with what we want to do in school. And, and we're realizing even, you know, with, with incidents like today, that our team is our entire school. And there, there might be things that come our way, and we have to be a great teammate and, and work our way through whatever happens next. And there's certainly kids that are, that feel very blessed to be able to practice and compete. And we really don't take any days for granted anymore. On defense, a lot of the same things that you're going to see in the classrooms, face coverings for our coaches and athletes on the sidelines and any sort of indoor activity aside from swimming, frequent handwashing and hand sanitizing, just like you would see in our classrooms, and then social distancing and making adjustments to our competitions and making adjustments to our sidelines, our bleachers, to make sure that we are able to move forward in competition and resume some of that normalcy, but in a way that mitigates and minimizes the impact should a close contact occur. And then this is my last slide here, just to highlight and note. So Dr. Tim McGuine of UW School of Medicine conducted a study in the spring semester between the time of the shutdown and the end of May. And so he conducted a study, it's just, it was a verbal interview with 3,243 adolescent student athletes, all students in the, in the state of Wisconsin. And you can see some of the data that he discovered in the, what students were reporting due to school closure and due to the impact of activity cancellations. And this was related to sports cancellations, activities, prom, events like prom and other memorable events that students have come to really cherish and enjoy. And, and that's, in his study, in his recommendations, the bottom line in italics there is his, his statement that really resonates with me in looking at the importance of participation in athletics and activities as a crucial and necessary intervention to help kids stay safe and healthy during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think that is a wonderful and an important way to view and to have that, that mindset that our students will thrive and be healthier if we continue to offer these opportunities for them to engage and if we can do so in a way that mitigates the risk and keeps our classrooms open for in-person learning as well. Any questions?
Do we have less participation in the sports and activities that we, that we, that we have so far this year, or is, is it basically the same?
We are, we, I would say we are right on trend. We're probably a little bit higher. Our cross-country teams are a little bit higher. Our football is probably 15 to 20 athletes higher than it has been over the last three years. Boys and girls volleyball, boys volleyball continues to grow. It's another sport that continues to accelerate in terms of participation numbers. So I, I would say in terms of overall participation so far, we are at or ahead of our three-year curve.
What about activities? Is, I don't know if anything has started or...
Yeah, we are, we're just getting rolling with activities. So things like Student Senate and Yearbook are up and running because they have decisions that need to be made, obviously, early in the school year. The variety, the rest of the other activities shown traditionally don't start until the end of September, early October, so we can get the school year started and get information out there.
Jordan, we know how many kids are involved in sports, and we can see that their grade point average is substantially better. Do we know how many are not included in, or sports and activities are not included in anything? And if we know who they are, what are we doing to reach out to them to help them get involved in this?
Yeah, absolutely. So I don't have the, I can get the specific number for a student that is not involved in, in anything. So we have, obviously, several students, a high number of students that are involved in a sport and activity, some that do activities only. In terms of outreach, I would say we don't have, you know, a real specific method other than just our students are the best marketers for their group. So early on, especially as we get started with our, our activities, we do drives like, you know, U+2 to try to get two other students that might not be involved in your group or activity. That, that works mostly with clubs and activities. A lot of the athletics students, you know, we try to encourage students to get started. The, the fall sports are always difficult because they start before school starts. So it's difficult to meet, you know, our classmates and to encourage them to join when we're already, you know, four to six weeks in. We will see a bigger spike of interest in our winter sports traditionally because students have more time and they get, they're comfortable in the school and then they identify kind of what they want to do for winter and spring. Anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Darnin.
Thank you.
Item C is our treasurer's report, which is available in the Board Docs library. Item 10 is our school board liaison reports.
Now I can say Mrs. Larson. Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Personnel and policy. Policy number 5011, non-discrimination of students on the basis of a disability. This policy is before you because it was last reviewed in 2009. There are no changes to the policy language. The changes were made to the administrative rules to ensure that the list of identified disabilities is not a final list. Are there any questions? Administration is requesting a reconfirmation of policy 5011.
So I'll be looking for a motion to reconfirm policy 5011.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mr. Alexandrowicz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Six, zero.
Our next policy on the agenda is 5320, supervision of occupational therapy and physical therapy assistance in school. This policy was also reviewed last in 2009. There are no changes to the policy language. However, the changes are made to the administrative rules to ensure only licensed occupational and physical therapists can evaluate the students and represent their best interests at an IEP meeting. These changes also ensure that there are written procedures that are conveyed to the OT and PT assistants regarding their roles and responsibilities. Administration is requesting a reconfirmation of policy 5320.
And I would be looking for a motion to reconfirm policy 5320. So moved. Motion by Mr. Lewin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wackowski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes six, nine.
And my final policy is policy 5420, appropriate use of seclusion restraint. The changes are being made to this policy due to a 2019 Wisconsin Act 118, which revises Wisconsin state law on addressing restraint and seclusion. The changes in this policy include the policy language, such as updating the definitions of seclusion and restraint, as well as administrative rules requiring that parents are given a written copy of an incident report, clarifying that the notice and reporting requirements apply to incident, incidents involving law enforcement, prohibiting prone restraint, revising training components, requiring that school staff hold a meeting after each incident of restraint or seclusion to discuss the topics specified in the action, conducting an IEP meeting with team within 10 days of a second time of seclusion or restraint that was used on a student with a disability in that same year. Also requiring each governing body to submit an annual report by December 1st to DPI. There is a motion, I'm looking for a motion to approve this with the presented changes.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised policy 5420 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Larson, second by Ms. Wackowski. All in favor, say aye.
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion, yes. Thank you.
So a police officer can be involved, I guess, does that happen? Where a police officer might be involved?
That's, I think, if you, if you potentially maybe have a resource officer in the school who may also be involved in that team process, that's, I think they're just looking for more clarity as far as if they were a part of that process, we need to make sure that that's documented.
Oh, okay. And they typically are not, I guess.
Correct.
Only if they're, like you said, they're in the school and they're, okay. I think you didn't mention this, Ms. Larson, but I thought I saw where the, you also have to report on students that might not be in our schools, but might be in alternative setting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that a change that's in here? So that would be like the...
They would have to follow, like if we had a student in an alternative placement, or again, if we place a child in another, in another school setting, they have to follow the same procedures that we do.
And we would see them in a report then, in the annual report. That's, okay. We're not aware of any activities happened in the last years, or you have no knowledge of anything?
We, we are in regular communication where we have students learning in different environments. So I would say we're, we are aware. We just haven't had situations where we would be...
Reporting and...
Yes.
Now, this, your report that we reviewed earlier deals a lot with students in the classroom who are having issues and they may need to be restrained. Would you also be reporting, let's say, if there was a fight in the high school hallway and someone had to be restrained, is that the same, included in that same report? Or would that be something totally different?
That's also addressed in here. So if they, yeah.
That's what I figured this, okay. But that would also be in that restraint report that you have. Yes, okay.
And just one last question. You changed it from the first time that you had to use a student with a disability where something had to be done. Now it's the second incident.
Correct.
What was the rationale for?
Oh, let me find that in here.
You know where it says that?
Just looking for where I have that in here.
The administrative rule.
Right, the administrative rule then. Before the debriefing section.
For some reason, I have a really hard time understanding you across the room with the masks on. I apologize.
You changed it from the first time...
Yep.
To, to now, it's like you get a, you know, there's a, I want to say free pass, but you know, it happens once, we're not going to worry about it. But the second time, you're going to call the IEP meeting.
Oh, as far as bringing the team together, yes.
So you changed it from first time to second time. Just curious why you...
Because sometimes if we would do it after the first time, I mean, again, depending on what the circumstances are, we may not need to make a change to the IEP. So, but if we see a second time, then we know we've got, there's something more happening with the students. So it's important to bring everyone together, and that's where we would discuss if we needed to make some changes in services based on that.
Yeah, it says, Act 118 repealed requirements for the child's individualized education program, IEP, to include specific content if the child's IEP team determines that the use of seclusion or physical restraint may be reasonably be anticipated for the child. If the child's IEP team, a child's IEP team must now convene as soon as practicable, but no later than 10 days after the second time that seclusion and physical restraint is used on the child with a disability in the same school year. So it's part of Act 118.
Falling state changes. All right, thank you.
So you had a motion by Ms. Wackowski, a second by Ms. Larson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes six, nothing. Motion passes six, nothing. Item D, board liaison reports.
I attended virtually the PTA meeting for Southwood Glen the other night. It was the most attended PTO meeting or PTA meeting I've ever been to. I think there was 35 people there, which is nice. It's a little difficult with that many people, because it's hard to tell who's talking, especially when you don't know a lot of people. But it's nice that so many people are engaged. I also attended my first CISA meeting, also virtually. I don't know if, I guess I need to ask the board if, I have the agendas to that meeting and the reports that we went over, which basically, what are we going to do this year? What are our goals? We've never received those in our packet before, but should I be sending those out, giving those to, giving those to you, so that we can send them out to everybody?
It really is what the board would like to receive with regard to your involvement with CISA 1. If the board itself would like to receive that information, then we could send it out. More information's better than less, usually.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, certainly wouldn't hurt to have it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I have not had my orientation at CISA, so I really don't know any of the faces of any of the people. So it's a little hard to follow the meeting, but without knowing anybody, that is difficult. But I will be having that within the next couple of weeks, before the next meeting, certainly. So I will, I will get that information to everybody regarding the agenda for the last meeting.
All right, okay. Thank you. I also attended the SWSA meetings. I think Judy runs in some of those. They still are involved at Children's Hospital. There's two doctors that they're, you can ask questions on. I think, I thought I heard the last one, the end game, would be a vaccine, and?
It's not an end game. It's a vaccine for flu.
Well, that's what was discussed at the, it was mentioned during the discussion, and, and I guess my mouth was talking. But I just wanted to share that they, it talked about December, so I was hopeful there. They also did say that we are in a high transmission area. That was the last report, with increasing trend, but we have our data that we're tracking locally, which matters the most. And also, they are, SWSA is putting together some forums for the state superintendent election coming up, so we'll be able to ask questions and, you know, make some choice, you know, get more information on the candidates for that. That's all I have on SWSA.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Item A, school and community engagement reports.
I did talk to Shauna at Countrydale regarding, you know, how things were going. She really did share that her, that her teachers were very involved in, you know, I'm sure it's a lot of day-to-day stuff that comes up that you have to figure out, and her, and her teachers were very appreciative of them just coming up and figuring things out as they came up, and I'm sure that's very important, that kind of flexibility. Because I was curious on how things were going, and that's what she mentioned, that things come up and they take care of it. And she also mentioned that she will be taking a leave, but we now know who will be replacing her in October, so I'll try and reach out with, to her also. So otherwise, the, she mentioned that she was, just before they had the first cases, but she said that they were always involved with the virtual, because they know that could happen, so everybody's ready to make that pivot. So it seemed like everything really went well, and preparations were ready for whatever came up. So it was very reassuring that we, I think we're doing well. And that particular school was my impression in talking to her. So that's all.
Anyone else? Okay. Item 11 is closed session. I'll be looking for a motion to enter into closed session.
Read this.
Okay. So the motion to enter into closed session is pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851D to review district threat of violence drills and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851E to discuss real estate negotiations.
Now I see the motion.
Now I need a motion to enter into closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Larson, second by Mr. Sprague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
We're enclosed.
This is where I go?
Yeah, we're enclosed.
We are now in closed session. Okay, let's back into open session.
He has to start the machine, so give him a sec.
All right. That'll give you time to figure out what time it is. All right. Go ahead. And we're back in open session at 7:27. Item 12, school board meeting debriefing. Any school board member comments? Hearing none. Item 13, future agenda items. District administrator goes on October 14th. These are alternative. At-risk report, also October 14th. Annual health report, October 14th. Mental health report, October 14th. Community and recreation department report, October 14th, and the 21, 20, 2020, 21 budget approval, October 28th. And item 14, adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. Motion by Mr. Sprague, sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrowitz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:28.